... Please stand for the Board of Edutaligents. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everyone. Unfortunately, Tom Blackburn and Alex Wells will not be with us this evening. And Tim will be here momentarily. Just wanted to let you know how important it is for Mr. Cruz to attend these meetings. He was in Topeka earlier, comes back for the Board of Education meeting, and will be back to his car and head back to Topeka. So, thank you for doing that. I think you're crazy, but thank you.
My wife.
I appreciate your dedication, which is amazing.
Thank you.
And I also wanted to recognize or introduce Austin Fisher is a reporter with The Telegram, a new face at the press table. Welcome Austin. And actually, just ask any questions you'd like, and we'll give the information to you as needed.
Sure, thank you.
All right. Oh, and Board Member-Elect Dana Henegaestock in the corner, not in trouble.
Okay, well then go ahead and get started with the approval of the agenda.
Now, President, we agree the agenda was following a business. First, remove item number C1 from the original agenda recognition of bus drivers, then add additional certified and classified personnel actions, item number E3, and finally, remove item G2 from the original agenda appoint a long-range facility committee.
First by Laura. Second by Mark. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal by raising your hand. Motion carries. Okay. Any correspondence? Discussing? Okay. Just want to be considered. President, I believe that we have certified consent to the agenda as previously amended. Motion by Laura. Second by Tim. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal by raising your hand. Motion carries. Great. All right, we're all the way up to the curriculum report. Dr. Dennis?
I'm going to go to Leanne.
All right. This evening, I would like to give you an update on readiness and student readiness for retention. And as you know, we're in year two of a three-year pilot of this policy. And this evening, I would just like to give you an update as next year at this time, you guys will be making a recommendation as to whether or not you want to continue doing this, tweak it, or what you want to do there. So as you recall, this is, was teacher-driven and continues to be teacher-driven. What they do every year is, I'll start with kindergarten, this is the second year that we've had kindergarten. And at the end of every year, they, they look at their exit criteria and they make recommendations for next year, how they want to tweak that. They look at the parent component also. And this year, they met with grade-level committees to get their input before the committee met. So, pretty sure that most teachers were able to get their input on this. This is the first year for second-grade readiness to begin first grade. Kind of the same procedure, they looked at their outcomes and they made those recommendations for how they wanted to tweak their exit criteria for next year. An added component this year was we had a couple of dads who volunteered to be on the committee. They added some valuable input to some of the pieces that they would like to see as a parent component. Those same two dads then also volunteered to be on the third-grade readiness, which we started this year looking at. And we created exit, or the teachers created exit criteria for third grade. Third grade is not mandatory retention. Third grade is just a document that will be looked at to, if there's any consideration of any retention at all. But this will be a joint effort between parents, teachers, and the principals when they, when they look at. It's just a document that will help them, you know, make better decisions. So what you have in front of you tonight, you have the retention numbers. And if you want to take that out and look at it, at the very right part of the column, you'll see the totals. For last year to this year, we decreased the number of total retention by five. But if you look at 2010, you're going to see, from 2010 on, you see a trend of decreasing retentions. Kind of interesting this year, our kindergarten retention has went from 23 to 30. Not really sure why that jump was there. Could be because of lack of experience with that class of kindergarten students coming in, possibly they didn't have any preschool experience. But it also could be that some of the exit criteria that we looked at, that we tweaked a little bit, had an impact there. We were also thinking that in first grade, because we put the criteria in place, there would be more retentions. But if you look at that compared to last year, you're going to see the same number of retentions. I would anticipate that number's going to get a little greater next year because of pieces that they put in place this year to maybe up those requirements just a little bit, maybe those adjustments at the end of the year. But also very interesting is if you look from second grade to sixth grade, you're going to see the number of retentions actually decrease. So I don't know what that means. I don't, don't know if it means that, you know, we're looking in our data, that we're, we're saying students come in with greater readiness criteria, that they're actually ready for the content that they're getting, and we're seeing those, that skill acquisition get better. So, that's pretty exciting to see. So, as we look at the last two years, as we met with principals at the end of the year to look at their numbers of retentions and to talk to them about the process, what they're saying is that they like the process, it takes most of the guesswork out of it, it's consistent, and that they're, they're excited about the parent communication that's taking place. Every year, they're seeing better parent communication. And again, when those groups meet at the end of the year to revise these criteria, that's one piece that they're talking about is that parent communication and how to make that stronger. So overall, we're saying great results with the process. So we'll continue to look at the data and see, you know, what our trends are telling us. So we're, we're hopeful that this is making a difference.
Thank you, Leanne. Any questions?
Just one, just looking at the, the numbers for each school, is there a particular reason, I mean, have you guys looked at why one school has a high number and one school has zero?
I think there should be another factor to play into that. Possibly the teachers and how long they've been in that position. You know, you may be looking at some brand-new teachers in positions, or maybe not. I think there's just a lot of criteria.
More students? And, are they all have the same amount of students in kindergarten as far as class size?
Pretty similar.
Okay.
Well, but the one who has zero has probably the fewest students in the district.
Well, I didn't necessarily mean to point out the zero, but some have one, two, and then some have six and fives.
You know, with them being, with it having more in the school itself, I mean, like you were saying, that it could be one of the reasons why you're seeing that difference with that one school and then the others.
And then you talked about this still being a pilot program. I thought last year, it was no longer a pilot program.
This is year two of the three-year pilot. So we have one more year.
Okay, first, second, third.
Right, and last year was the first year that you added second.
Second.
Right. Well, second grade, second grade actually put their exit criteria in place this year, but that's not really mandatory retention. So that will just kind of be a tool that they will determine if that's necessary.
I love the proficiency assessment concept for third grade, and I love that we're doing what we can early, as early as we possibly can. The other piece that I really like about this is the consistency across the district instead of it being, you know, different from building to building, which is kind of what we were hearing at faculty meetings, you know, three years ago, is, you know, I, I didn't think we could retain, or, you know, I thought we had to in this situation, and things like that. So it's nice that we're, we're functioning as a complete cohesive district instead of building by building. So all students are treated the same no matter where their family school is.
But I think that's what we're seeing. You're seeing those retentions happen in kindergarten, first grade, where Governor Brownback was implement, trying to implement a policy where we would retain third graders. And we were saying, that's too late. And this is kind of showing that, that if we catch them early, you're not going to have that need for Brownback.
Yeah, you know, this, this systemization approach has just got so many strengths to it. Of course, with that systemization, there's been a little concern on how we, as we pilot this thing, how we adjust. And it sounds like we have a strong collaboration going on there. You know, you can have good criteria that you think need to be there in order to meet, say, board goals or the purposes of initiative, and, and then weigh that against, we're retaining too many, or we're promoting too many. I don't know how we would promote too many unless we adjust the criteria too low, where everybody can make it, and then we get back to that challenge that the teachers were facing, that we were taking sort of substandard kids into first grade or into second grade and the effects that had on the classroom. So, it'll be interesting here with this third year to see how we've done, because it seems like there's wonderful collaboration and adjustment. Fundamentally, I've just been concerned that, that, that primary delivery system of the parent, teacher, principal have enough latitude to be able to answer that basic question, is this child going to make it? And, and that's not only quantitative, but qualitative in those, in that decision. And so, you know, we ran into some discussions maybe a year ago, that this is not only mandatory retention, but mandatory promotion. We have to be careful that mandatory too originally applied to the expense of that fundamental judgment of that primary delivery team.
Well, along those lines, but one thing that I was kind of thinking that hit me to while Leanne was talking, was we have that cutoff where you're mandatorily retained. And I'm wondering if there's a way, and, or if the teachers have considered maybe a point or two above that, having that be discretionary. So I think in kindergarten, I think it's 24. If you score 24 on the rubric, then you are promoted. But I'm wondering if like 24, 25, do we need to have a conversation about, okay, we're not going to mandatorily retain, but it's within the teacher and the parent's discretion? I mean, because I understand your concern as well. I don't know, has something like that been discussed, having that little latitude there? It hasn't, but what they did was they raised the numbers up because they felt that they weren't catching some of the pieces really that they need in that retention piece. So we'll see how that works next year, if that number is the right number, it's hard to hit just that right spot, so.
But does that, does that, I mean, again, this pilot, it's fascinating to me to, to see this effort, put together this quantification tool for its purposes and the strengths that we've talked about across the district and for the classroom, the new teacher, all that kind of thing. But at some point, it's sort of like you've got to have that qualitative stuff in there that's hard to put it down to, because, because every student's different. It's a, and that's why I say it's fascinating, because if you can get there, it's almost marketable as a tool. But at the same time, there's a lot of judgment there with that child, child by child.
I like that the pilot and the rubric is trying to minimize the subjectivity and maximize the objectivity so you can get more consistency. And so I like the idea of adjusting the bar so that it's consistent across the board in all buildings, more so than, I'm not wanting to take away the latitude of being able to look at individual students, but if you do that over and over again, you're going to lose the consistency piece. So I think a balance, more Mark's saying, and what the thought behind why the pilot was put together, it deserves some discussion, so.
If I, to interject, I think that's exactly the key point. This is going to come back to you sometime next year for exactly that, what's the policy that ought to be implemented, should this be continued, should be modified, should it be abandoned? So, I know Leanne's purpose tonight is more to inform you kind of where we are, but those are exactly the policy questions you're going to have to grapple with probably next year.
Good times. Did you hear that, Leanne?
Yeah. Are you tracking any data other than just the raw numbers of students who are retained? I mean, you had mentioned there is some variation between teacher experience level and things like that. I think we can glean a lot more information on how best, you know, each grade level students will do if we can gather some of that information. Because, for instance, you know, as Tim brought up, you know, if you have five retained in one school and zero retained in another, but it doesn't really tell you about how many kindergarten students, you know, there were. So I think additional information might, might helpful, be helpful, as well as, you know, getting some raw data on class size, maybe experience level of the teachers or other things that you can factor in, because I think there's going to be at least some sort of a sweet spot where, you know, this is the maximum, the best situation for these students to have, have, you know, class sizes of this size and, and this level of experience to try to make sure that our students do well. Because just having the raw numbers of those retained and the total class size in the building, it isn't as helpful, I think, as it could be as a good suggestion.
Even a parent survey, you know, on, on a student that was retained, or even on all students and say, you know, do you feel like, you know, kind of a whole bunch of hypothetical questions, but specifically on, you know, the students that do repeat, you know, do you feel that you were kept informed of your student progress throughout the year? Do you agree with the decision that the teacher made to retain? You know, so that we can get some information.
We do have some of that. We have communication, we have documentation for parents agree or disagree with the decision because they're part of that process, that communication. There is more, I, I agree in concept, there's more data that would be helpful in making the decision. And if you go back two or three years and looked at these sheets, there's more here than we've done in the past, so it's continually evolving.
What would be great would be to have some of that information too. If we invited some, you know, people who are currently in Topeka right now to one of our retreats, and we're able to give them this information and say, this is why education needs to be funded, because if we have a class size of 15, we have zero retained, whereas if we have a class size of 50, we have issues.
Good, hard data to back that comment up.
But I think we should really try to get, what I would think we're trying to get is what is the optimal conditions that we would desire at each grade level to ensure student success? And that's, that's going to be more factors than I think that we're looking at now, and I, I don't, I don't know what all those criteria or all those things would be, but I think we probably have a good handle on what areas are going to be the best to maximize that student success, because really, we're walking a very fine line between consistency without rigidity, individualized for the student and for the demographics in our, in our school and in our community. And that's, that's going to be a very fine line that we need to look at. So, I, I like the data a lot. I'd like to see more of the, the data for information, because I think it's going to point us in the way that'll be best for the students.
Make sure they, both sets of teachers, one that had zero or one retention versus a one that had five and six, why do they feel they had that many, and why do they feel they didn't have many? I mean, maybe those teachers are doing something that the other teachers aren't aware they could be doing, kind of like the math thing, New York engaged, again, New York, you know, we'll get help with that. Maybe that's why, I don't know, a good point, I agree, I think they need to get more of that.
Are we able to get the teachers at each grade level together to kind of review their situations and do that?
There are learning opportunities throughout the year if we can get grade levels and teachers together that collaborate, so yeah, there's a lot of.
I just think, in particular on this topic, might be a really good thing for them to all look at together, to see why didn't our school have this, and another have that.
We did ask some of those same questions when we brought principals in, to talk about their retentions. We talked about, you know, what interventions would the students give them, how many parent contacts were made, what are some of the things you did in your building to support parent involvement, and we did ask some of those questions.
Because I hear it spoken this way, and maybe it's just a term of process. Again, this is mandatory promotion and mandatory retention. So I'm also interested on the other side, if there was some mandatory promotions that didn't work out.
We didn't parent give this year, maybe we're just on there, but none came to our attention.
One came to our, but, so that's why it's, you know, it's just part of the data.
But we had, the one that you're speaking of, we had a year of promotion, and see how, was that a year ago, or was that? Okay, so.
Is that the one, Mr. Rude, you're talking about? Was it the one from last year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you might just get.
We have, we're not, I'm not aware of any that happened this year. We are aware, obviously, of the one from last year.
So I agree, that would be good information to get, just to see what the student did this year.
Yeah, because part of our discussion was, was just that, that if we mandatorily promote, how'd they do? Because our notion was, hey, pilot, if they don't work out, it's still just first grade, or, yeah, I think, anyway, we've got the next year to catch it, and so it'd be nice to know.
Okay, and you have some great comments.
One, one thing, I know, based on my recollection of the criteria, it was primarily academic. I was wondering if there maybe should be some social competencies that are included in that, because that, a lot of social skills are really more, more telling on, on the maturity and how students will be able to handle on an under-grade level. And that's very subjective, I'm sure, as well. It's harder to quantify, but I think maybe there needs to be some sort of look at whether that would be appropriate as well.
Well, it's an interesting conference.
That unquantifiable aspect of that primary delivery team, that's what I was speaking of in those judgments, that teacher works with that student so much, and has, and with the parent and with the principal. And so some of those things that are not so quantifiable, that's why I was concerned that we have some latitude to address that somehow, and maybe.
My concern would be the opposite. They think the child's immature, but it's very intelligent. I mean, you know, Albert Einstein's kindergarten teacher didn't think they'd, he'd go anywhere. I think he did pretty good. You know, so I, I would be concerned about putting too much emphasis, I mean, I understand that there needs to be something, may need to be some of that, but I would be very hesitant to put too much on that. That would be my concern.
Well, it's, on the contrary side, I would look at those students who, who have had difficulty, and we look at suspension and expulsion reports, and, and those are behavioral issues, not academic issues. So, you know, I, I think that social ability to be with your peers is a, is a pretty important thing to have to avoid those other kinds of misbehaviors that, that we see that get extended and then the student is out of school for some reason, so.
I want to kind of move back to, this started as an effort to make sure that kids were ready to enter into their next grade. Grew out of our board faculty meeting conversations a frustration that teachers had. It's probably not perfect right now. We still have that committee working. The, the data that's been shared with the board tonight is by no means complete, but it's a snapshot of what we know right now in terms of what's happening currently with retentions and kind of a five-year or thereabout history. We will be bringing this back at the, towards the end of next school year, maybe at the completion of the school year, when we've completed that three-year pilot, to ask the board to adopt something that's more, a more permanent type of policy. But the focus here is really on trying to address that readiness component, given, and reduce the variability across 11 different elementary schools. And we're, we're getting into a lot of other issues here that are also important issues, but they may be, they're connected, but they may be broader than, than what we can solve strictly with this pilot. And so, good discussion. But I, again, I think the point of tonight was just to give you kind of a quick update. This is what we know on the very surface in terms of retentions. This is one piece of data. When that committee brings back the final report next year, they will, they will be bringing more than just this data, but as, as we reach this point in the year, this is the data that we were able to assemble at this point, and thought it would be timely just to, to give you an update. So we're not asking for any action, it's just kind of an FYI, here's where we're at.
Great. Thanks, Dr. Carler. And good comments, board. I really appreciate the feedback on Leanne as well, Dr. Dennis. Yes.
So, you've all alluded to exit criteria. Other than specifically grades, what are those criteria?
I could share that with you later.
Sure, okay. And I was concerned, I, I had a question about, what were those original teacher frustrations that were brought up?
Can we, can we address those maybe after?
Sure, okay.
Those are great questions, and we've got some answers for them.
Okay.
We'll give them to you. Okay, Leanne is up. Dr. Carler, are you going to visit with us about the memorandum of understanding between the youth entrepreneurs in the district?
Uh, yeah.
Or who was going to talk about that?
I'll be, I'll be.
Okay, that'd be great.
Are you going to stay with her?
I'll go and recuse myself this time.
Due to a conflict in intros course, excuse yourself for this discussion.
Tim, it's a good thing you got here.
Yeah. We needed you.
The, the Y E K Youth Entrepreneurs Memorandum is a standard memorandum. This is a program we've had in the district for probably five, six, seven years. I'm, I'm shooting off the cuff there. Very, very good program. It's funded at, with outside funds, and basically, this is just our obligation to provide the courses, provide the room, build that into our structure at the high school. Just a little background, we were contacted by a competing agency to the Y E K group that's based out of Pennsylvania this year. They didn't realize we already had all this in place. They're running a very similar program, and had we not had a program in place, we'd have been very interested in pursuing it with them, but there would have been a lot of effort to fundraise within our community to pay for it. That's all taken care of by the Y E K organization. So, Liberal and Dodge both have programs. Happy to report to think a regional competition, we took four out of five, or five out of six places in the regional competition this year, so our program is doing well, and this is simply a standard agreement that we do to redo that, so we're able to. simply a standard agreement that we do to redo that, so we're able to offer that program next year.
Excellent. The agreement that's in our packet specifically goes over how we're going to provide teacher support and student support, as well as create a positive environment in the schools, provide staffing space, logistics for the program, and a few other miscellaneous items. Teachers who require training and development are required to attend training and development and to manage the program and to evaluate the program, and obviously, knowing, applying the communication between the program and the district. So any questions about the memorandum and the agreement in our packet?
Just real quick, and they're just, no big deal here, but arrange transportation for youth entrepreneurs field trips. That's just arranged, that's not, and we provide, we would provide that through the district transportation. And that's not necessarily the competition, and how does that fit into our policy?
Well, for example, this year, I think we had a group that went out, I can remember if it was through the Y E K, we had a group that went out to one of the buildings that was under construction, took some of our kids out there, we had an opportunity to put them with some business people.
It's local travel, it's not, not the state?
Yes, and it could be primarily local, but it could be like the regional competition. We would provide transportation to that as well. It's a, it's a school activity, so we would do that.
And don't get me wrong, I just think this is a outstanding program, but it's first consistency within the program. Is, would that transportation be covered by the support the district gets from this organization, or is it out of pocket?
I, I think that is probably district dollars that are being spent, but that's no different than, for example, our J R O T C kids presented colors after the women football game in Dodge City Saturday. The district provides the transportation, it's a school activity, we send the kids over there, we do budget dollars for those kind of trips.
So the transportation we provide for Y E K is consistent with our other school organizations?
Correct.
Yeah.
And then another question here, the organization deserves the right to request replacement or removal of instructors?
That's you, intended. You need, from the standpoint of the whole program, you need, I mean, it's their curriculum that they've developed and we deliver, our instructor delivers, and so basically, if they feel like the.
The delivery is the curry.
Right, that the program's not being implemented with fidelity, then they certainly can request that out, because it's ultimately our decision.
Any other questions or qualifications? No, I'm speaking to entertain the motion to approve the memorandum.
I hope we approve the memorandum of understanding between youth entrepreneurs and the state workplace.
Motion by Jean, second by Tim, and further discussion. All in favor, see if they're raising their hand. Motion carries. Thanks. All right, while we're getting Laura back, Roxy and